Okay, I'd like to open up the April 1st, 2020 Mansfield Select Board meeting to order. Kevin, are we gonna skip the pledge, or you want to do it?
Yes, we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you mind saying it?
Sure. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna read that statement before we do the first item on the business about the meeting being, the way it's being handled, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. "Whereas both the Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Mass Department of Public Health have advised residents to take extra measures to put distance between themselves and other people to further reduce the risk of being exposed to COVID-19. Governor Baker has issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open-meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. In order to satisfy the open-meeting law requirements, tonight's Town and Mansfield Select Board meeting will be open to public attendance, excuse me, will not be open to public attendance, but will be broadcast live on Mansfield Cable access. And following tonight's meeting, the Select Board will have answers provided to all questions and comments from the public related to this evening's meeting via email at questions@mansfieldma.com or by phone during Town Hall hours of operation. When calling, we ask that you please contact the department to which your question is related, or we welcome you to reach out to the Town Manager's Office at (508) 261-7370 to aid in answering your question. It is important to us that you have a platform for your questions and that you receive accurate information in a timely manner. We ask that you allow 24 hours for us to respond. A link of tonight's meeting will be provided on the Town's Facebook page approximately an hour after the conclusion of our meeting." Okay. So with that being said, we can start with the agenda, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just have to flip over to another file here. So the first item is residents' questions and comments. I believe we had a couple of email inquiries that I've asked Kevin to read into the record only because it's easy for him to read it from the mics there when we can discuss it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This first email was received on Tuesday, March 31st, at 7:36 PM. This is from Greg Penises. It says, "Good evening. How do Mansfield residents access the Town's meetings without cable? Is there a livestream, but the link just isn't posted anywhere? I noticed the attached agenda states tonight's Select Board meeting is held virtual/remote, but nowhere do I see how to actually access the meeting. Many households have cut the cord, like our household, and we don't have access to traditional cable. Instead, we could livestream the meetings, which if you are broadcasting live anyway, I'm sure it can easily be done and would be more in an inclusive way of reaching a wider audience. Much appreciated, Greg." And, Mr. Chair, would you like to address this on a case-by-case basis, or would you like me to read the next one and then address separately?
I guess, I think there's two. If anybody has any comments on this, go ahead.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, Steve. I think Greg has a very good point. I think, you know, those of us, including myself, who have cut the cord on cable and, you know, we do watch TV, we have everything through the WebEx or the Internet these days, you know, we can't watch it. We have to wait two days, sometimes three days, for an actual cable access broadcast. And given that a majority of the towns around us have gone virtual and have a full agenda this week of meetings, we need to step up. And I know we've been working on it, but, you know, I think that once we get somewhere where residents can participate, then the rest of our boards and committees will have the advantage to prepare ourselves for the coming months and kind of be like business as usual again. I hope we get to that point very soon. I know myself, I've been a WebEx guy, or a GoToMeeting guy, or ZoomMeeting guy, I've done everything, working from home for the past nine years. So, you know, if the town needs any information on what works, I'm one of the guys to ask. I've been doing this work from home for nine years and being on webcast and videocast all that time. So I offered my services over the past couple of weeks, but no one took advantage of them. So I look forward to having virtual, open meetings so that residents can participate from their homes and we can, you know, get to something more business as usual as best as we can. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, it's Frank. It's my understanding that we're pursuing using an online platform for the next meeting, which I assume would be open to other committees as they need to meet. I mean, the governor was relatively clear, and I know in other states such as Maine, the municipal associations are saying that you should only have the meetings that are necessary and you should prioritize them. But Steve is right, we have to work towards getting this going because meetings become more necessary as time passes.
Okay. Kevin, any thoughts?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Just so everyone is aware, we have been working and testing on different platforms. And as of today, Carrie's gonna be sending you five, the instructions and to do some training prior to our next meeting on 4/15, which will provide an opportunity for you to all be on GoToMeeting, which will be live, which we can stream, and which can be recorded. So that way, we can make sure that we're posting that to the proper places and that cable access will also have an opportunity to have access to that as well. So we've been working on that, we tested it, we went live on that for all of our staff meetings that we had today, which is fantastic. So we are going to be live at our future meetings for GoToMeeting. And that provides all of the opportunities, as it would, as almost as if we were together. It kind of appears as if it's a Brady Bunch image. You can see all of the people who are invited to the meeting, so to say, and also somebody could be set up as an actual presenter. So if we have a public hearing with a presenter, the person who is presenting, the actual documents and the screen can be showed, so everybody who is on or dialed in for that, we can have that as an opportunity. In addition, for the public to be able to call in, and has a muted feature so the actual board and committee can do its business, and if people need to speak, there's an opportunity to actually put in your comments under a chat section and actual things can be done in a live manner. So we have tested it, it works, and we're now using it for our internal meetings as effective for today.
Just so you know, I use GoTo every day for the State Auditor's Office. We've been using it for years, so it's pretty easy. You just click on the link and you're there. So I'm not anticipating any issues with us, we should be fine.
So, Mr. Chair, that means this is the last time we could be in our pajamas during the meeting?
You could cover your screen, your camera.
Kidding. Humor doesn't come across the telephone lines as well. I'll do better next time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Frank, you know, I appreciate the fact that Kevin and the Town staff has taken the time and not rushed through doing this. I know some communities have tried using Zoom, for example, and they've hit some snags with that, so to speak. So, you know, one of these more robust, tested platforms is probably the way to go, and it's gonna be in place in plenty of time for everyone to meet and meet their obligations in terms of the town meeting, et cetera. Thank you.
Right. Now, GoTo is a pretty well-known, on-the-shelf product, I believe, because I know we've used it for years, so hopefully that works out well.
Indeed, Mr. Chair, it is. And the Zoom issues came up in the last 24 hours, or they've been around for a bit, but all you need to do is use the password and security that's available, and those issues will go away. But no, I'm looking forward to using GoToMeeting. It does give you those features, like Kevin said, mute and the ability to see what you're talking about on screen. It'd be almost like we're there.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Neil, question.
Go ahead, Neil.
Will this system be available to all the other boards and committees, such as Finance and Planning Board and all the others?
Yes.
I haven't really, Kevin, can you hand, I haven't talked to Kevin about it, honestly?
Yes, we're doing, this is actually gonna roll out in two phases. One is gonna be an updated memo to all boards and committees that will be an update to the memo that I did send out on March 11th, which had postponed all unnecessary unless something is absolutely required to have a public meeting, that they are to be suspended until further notice. If something is absolutely required, we should be having those meetings. If it's not, then we should be underneath what we're gonna be discussing tonight as the update from our public health agent, in addition to Chief Justin, the fact that underneath the current circumstances, unless it's required, Neil, we really should not be having any other type of meeting at this point in time, unless there's actual required business. But a meeting to have a meeting also has some other tangible things that are tied to it that will require one or more people sometimes to come out and post the necessary meetings and may end up having to do some recording feature or some manual updates. So we're trying not to be able to have that. I know Barry spends an expense, extensive amount of time working on this as well, and we can talk about that just a little bit later in our meeting tonight. But that is gonna be rolled out with the directions and with some practice sessions with the chairs of the appropriate boards and committees, because we do know that this is probably gonna be going on for some time, Neil.
Yeah, I guess the question becomes, you know, how do you define, well, necessary? I mean, so we could talk about it more later, but just echoing what Frank and Steve said, I mean, I understand there's other stuff going on, but it would be nice if we could move towards, you know, getting stuff done versus just being in a state of suspension for too long.
Neil, I agree. I mean, we're behind right now, our neighbors, Sharon Plainville, Foxborough, and North Attleboro, very robust, full agendas. I'm looking at the North Attleboro right now. They've got a Board of Assessors meeting, no, that was canceled, but they have a Planning Board meeting tomorrow night, it's a virtual one, with resident participation, and it seems like we're gonna be able to catch up. But the one question I have that parallels what Neil said is, there is a Planning Board meeting on the 15th that has a lot of public hearings. I presume those will have to be delayed until at least everyone understands how to work GoToMeeting, and we've tested it pretty well, so that residents can fully participate. And Kevin, that's what you're gonna do.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I agree with what everybody's saying about trying to get to a point where the boards are meeting and carrying on business as usual, but I appreciate the approach that we've actually taken. You know, people throw out the, oh, just sign up for Zoom. I think you've seen Zoom has exhibited problems where people have hacked them. Foxborough was using them, and I think they stopped using it as of yesterday, the public schools. There was some lewd behavior that was happening with people hacking. I mean, just Google it and you'll find that, you know, this is happening all over the country, where these Zooms being hacked, if it's not appropriate.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Yeah, as I always say, make haste slowly. I don't think we should overemphasize what our neighbors are doing. I've read a couple of articles recently, and I ran across one dealing with municipalities in Massachusetts, and they were talking about the city of Amherst and what they were doing. And all, most towns are in the, in the place where we are, or maybe not even that far. Some towns have come ahead, and some of them have had some issues with it, and some have gone smoothly. I know the Maine Municipal Association, a very interesting article, they were talking about how their recommendation is to do it exactly how we, how we do it, but also, you know, to work towards getting better participation. And it was interesting, they also said like that only, you know, meetings that are absolutely necessary should be going forward. You know, I hope we move forward as time goes on, meetings do become more necessary.
Yep. Okay, so I think that, I think, you know, over the last six, this has all happened, you know, the number one priority has been the safety and well-being of the residents and the employees, and I think that we've taken that as our number one task, and that's been, we've done a great job. And now, as this continues to keep going, you know, we'll have to put some things in place to keep moving the business of the town. So I think with Kevin's plan, we'll hopefully do that, and we can, you know, try and do the best we can with the business of the town that we have in front of us. Okay. All right. Kevin, you want to read that other, there was a second, a second resident that had some stuff to say?
Yes, thank you. This is to the Mansfield Select Board. This is from Alan Brier, 187 Copeland Drive, where it says, "Greetings. I hope this finds you all well. I wanted to submit a question, comment, set that I feel that is not only pertinent but thoroughly related to the topics facing the Select Board this evening and in the near future. On the point of rescheduling the Town elections, I wanted to voice my support for doing so. As you may imagine, I'm excited that Mansfield not only has a core of incumbents still willing to stand, but will also have challengers. I just want to say that at this time when Mansfield is trying to not only get past what COVID-19 brings our way, but to embark on a vision, we would do a great disservice if we did not allow the greatest opportunity for the voters to be informed and ready to cast their votes. Our annual Town meeting is also an area of concern for me, and I would like the Board to at least consider the need and benefit of a potential delay. I specifically call for this not only as a citizen, but as a citizen member of the Master Plan Committee. I feel it again would be a disservice to keep the committee, the citizens, and the Select Board from having ample opportunity to see the final draft transition to an article for passage and acceptance. Lastly, connected to the Master Plan update and the current situation we find ourselves in, I don't have any single solution, and I am not one to dictate what line others should feel comfortable crossing regarding the safety of themselves and others. I do believe the meeting room affords an ability to allow for a mix of in-person and remote access for Town officials and the Mansfield cable, thus maximizing 20th-century coverage. The following comes from the Master Plan Update, 6B, small iii. Further develop a more comprehensive plan for emergencies and address specific needs before a crisis strikes. Although offered up in context of triple E, I found it eerily precedent that stakeholders had voiced the need before we found ourselves where we are today. Perhaps the knowledge that the Town is/has been active on this front will provide some reassurances to the residents. I also humbly submit the support, the support's my earlier comments. Thank you, Alan Brier, 187 Copeland Drive."
Okay. What are your thoughts on, two-thirds of his letter deals with items four and five, correct?
That is correct.
So in order to, I'm looking at the agenda, the way it's set up, I would, I would prefer this, you, we could get the chief and Amy wrapped up and out, and then maybe we could discuss Mr. Brier's letter in four and five, if that's okay with everyone?
That would be fine with me.
Certainly.
Okay. All right, good. All right, so Kevin, why don't you ask Justin and Amy to update us, and we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the rest of the members. As we had just two weeks ago for our last meeting, we have our health agent, Amy Donovan Palmer, with us, and also Chief Justin DeRozers, to be able to go through and kind of recap of where we've been from our last meeting that took place here in this room, and for those people who are watching at home and on reruns of the rebroadcast of this meeting, to bring them up to speed of where we've been. And as you all are aware, things have been changing very rapidly, sometimes on a daily basis, not just what's happening here in Town Hall, but those things that we actually see on television and that we see through our social media feeds from, whether it's the state of Massachusetts with Governor Baker, other surrounding cities and towns, but certainly on the federal level as well, of those things that continue to ebb and flow very rapidly. So we thought it was a good idea to do an update of where we were, what we're covering, where it's posted, and then to show where we're, really where we are today and how our discussions changed really from over the weekend coming into this week, and as we prepare for this next phase of the pandemic as we're moving forward. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our health agent, Amy.
Hello. When we last met two weeks ago on March 18th, schools were closed and public access to municipal facilities was restricted. The COVID-19 Task Force was meeting daily, and at that point, a plan for employees to work remotely was being developed. Starting on March 23rd, all municipal employees who could work remotely did so. Town administration and MIS worked diligently to get employees the technology they needed to conduct business from their homes, where we could all follow the governor's guidelines, stay home, stay safe. Also, on March 23rd, Governor Baker issued an order requiring all nonessential businesses to close their physical workplaces and facilities to workers, customers, and the public starting on March 24th. Last week and again this week, original timelines have been extended to further prevent the spread of the coronavirus. It has been a long two weeks. Right now, the message from both the state and federal government is clear. Cases of COVID-19 are increasing, and we all must do our part to stop the spread. Stay home as much as possible and follow social distancing guidelines. Distance is our single best weapon in battling COVID-19. In accordance with the extended guidelines as set forth by the governor yesterday, the Town of Mansfield will continue with the following actions until no sooner than May 4th. Municipal buildings are closed to the public. Municipal employees will continue to provide essential services while working remotely as best as possible. At this point, to protect both the residents and the employees from any kind of virus spread, only emergency or essential inspections for the building, conservation, and public health departments will be conducted. Mansfield public schools are closed, but continue to provide grab-and-go lunches for students on Tuesdays and Fridays between 10:00 AM and 11:00 AM. The library continues to offer online services only. Please check out their website for much more information. The Council on Aging is also closed, but continues to deliver meals on wheels with best practices. Mansfield Recycling and Composting Green is closed. Homeowners can purchase compostable brown bags locally and store the leaves and brush at their home until the green can open safely. When it is safe to open the green, the staff is committed to extending the hours as necessary to accommodate any additional volume. Municipal playgrounds and fields remain closed for any group in team sports and gatherings for more than 10 people. The fields are open for walking, running, or biking, but people must practice social distancing and stay at least six feet away from others nearby. The COVID-19 Task Force continues to enforce the governor's orders for nonessential businesses to close their physical workplaces and facilities to workers, customers, and the public. Business and organizations not on the list of essential services are encouraged to continue operations through remote means that do not require workers, customers, or the public to enter or appear at the brick-and-mortar premises closed by the order. Curbside pickup is not allowed. The COVID-19 Task Force understands what is being asked can be anywhere from inconvenient to extremely difficult. At the local level, enforcement actions are being taken to slow the spread of the coronavirus to protect the residents and the employees of the Town of Mansfield, and in turn, the entire public. We have worked hard to educate residents on why these measures are essential, both in our alert messages and on our webpage. Please know if you have any questions, the Health Department is here to answer any of them. Moving forward, the Task Force, DPW, and school administration will work together to find new ways to strongly emphasize that social distancing is essential for everybody. We are hearing through numerous calls to Town Administration, the Health Department, and the Police Department that there are some residents, particularly adolescents, who are ignoring our constant messages that they must not gather in groups. Even if you are feeling well, you may still be carrying the virus and may pass it along to an unsuspecting friend who will bring it back to their household, causing more illness. This spread of disease causes a stress on our community. When essential workers become ill, whether it's firefighters, police officers, supermarket workers, truck drivers, or healthcare providers, services are disrupted, affecting all of our lives. The COVID-19 Task Force is considering the need to establish additional restrictions to stop the spread of the disease, such as possibly close municipal playgrounds and fields totally. This is the most essential time to work together to do our part in flattening the curve. April will be a month of sacrifice for everybody, some more than others. But with all these efforts, we can literally save lives. The entire COVID-19 Task Force thanks all the residents for their understanding and assistance in stopping the spread of this deadly virus.
Amy, thank you for that. And I think that while many people are not affected by this at this point in time, and Barry, I'm gonna ask that you allude to this a little bit further on in our discussion this evening, but the fact is, this is not life as normal. So while some people may be working from home, and this hasn't touched your household, or this hasn't touched members of your family or your friends, it is very well-witnessed that we're having this discussion not only in the Town of Mansfield here tonight and on an ongoing basis. We're in a crisis, and I want to make sure that everybody fully understands this is a health, public health crisis. And we see how drastically things change, how fast numbers change, the number of infections, the number who are very ill, the overrunning of hospital services, the lack of supplies in some circumstances, and that we have an issue where some people, the questions that are coming into Town Hall, which people aren't hearing, but we hear on a daily basis, is a public health alarming concern? And I can't be any more clear about that tonight, and the fire chief and I have had this discussion, public health agent, and Barry, and many others in our COVID-19 Task Force, superintendent of schools, and many other members are very concerned about the fact that the public isn't taking this to the specific intent, that they're not thinking about, they're trying to still live their life as it were normal. It is not under a normal circumstance. And as we're going through and dealing in the next week, two weeks, three weeks, and four weeks ahead, Amy, you alluded to tonight, this is gonna be the most pressing time for this area of the country. And we have the opportunity to get this under control, and everybody has their part in this. If we don't stay home, stay safe, we are the ones who have the opportunity to help flattening that curve. In flattening that curve, we're looking at 100,000 to 200,000 deaths, and that's if we're all doing our part. If we're not doing our part, that number can skyrocket to over a million to 2 million people who could die from this coronavirus. So I can't say any more plainly, factually, as we have our discussions tonight, this is a crisis, it is not life as normal, and we will continue to take additional actions as we deem necessary in order to protect our residents of the Town, and continue to urge all people who live in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and others who hear our message as it spreads, you need to take this seriously. This is a public concern. Groups of children, adolescents, teenagers should not be in groups out and about, whether it's in a playground, whether it's in a field, people should be separated no closer than six feet apart. This has to be taken very seriously. This has been an issue not only for the Police Department, the Fire Department, Department of Public Health, and the schools. We're all reinforcing the same message, and we must practice that. So I just want to make sure that that message is loud and clear for everyone who may be listening and for also for the Board tonight. While we may not be at that level yet, our health officials are warning on a federal and state level, this is coming, the peak is coming, and we need to be ready for that. Barry?
Thank you, Kevin. I just want to just add to that, I appreciate your comments and those of Amy as well, and I look forward to hearing from the fire chief as well. But I just wanted to circle back on, on something that Amy pointed out, and that is, the governor's executive order basically is to stay home unless you're essentially needed. And I want to bring that full circle to our previous discussion about meetings. To have a meeting is not simply to have a virtual meeting with GoToMeeting, it's more than that. To have a legal meeting, we need a human being to leave their home so, and come and post that meeting in the vestibule. We need a human being to leave their home and come and videotape it for Mansfield Cable. So meetings are not just virtual, they require human beings to not stay home, to leave their home, and come to do something. So it's, that's important to remember, which is why we're trying to keep nonessential meetings to a bare minimum. So I just wanted to make sure that we understood what's involved with a virtual meeting.
Thank you, Barry. At this point, Chief Justin?
Good evening. I have an update on the number of cases. The Fire Department, we cover through our community EMS program, the public health nursing here. So the updates as of when I left the office were, there is 18 patients currently positive for COVID-19 in Mansfield. There's one case that has recovered. There's one case that has recovered, and there's a total of 48 people that are in quarantine or isolation. That's a total of the positive patients and their contacts, people that have come in contact with the positive patients. So 48 is the total. An exciting thing that happened this week is, we were getting a little backlog with some of the case investigations. So Christine Dooling and Superintendent Murphy volunteered some of the school nurses to come, so they've been coming. We have an isolated office for them that they use, and they've been helping us. It's been a tremendous help. They've been coming in every day to do that. That's where it stands with the numbers right now. Some other things that Kevin asked me to touch on is how we're keeping our employees safe in police and fire. First of all, I speak with Chief Sellon multiple times a day, so we're both on the same page with our employees. We both keep up to date. We've locked down both fire stations. There's no visitors, no family. Both fire stations have to stay separate, except if they're on emergency calls. We've canceled any interdepartment training. That way, we don't have anybody all in one group. The guys try to do the social distancing as much as possible. Obviously, we need to be in the same vehicles together, but as much as possible, we try to do that. We have employee screening set up every morning on the way in, and then halfway through the shift, they answer a bunch of questions and they get their temperature taken. That way, we can monitor if anybody's not feeling well and send them home if necessary or to a doctor. We have a new dispatch screening. Director Verdon and Assistant Director Berg have put in place that they work on daily to update, and it asks certain questions, so that way we can figure out what the risk is while we're responding to the call, and it gives them a different set of instructions now. Like if patients can walk out to meet us at the ambulance, it's safer for all of us if they meet us outside, if possible. Director Verdon actually just updated it today. We have secured our supply chain. We were starting to get low on some PPE at the beginning of this because of the big rush. We were having trouble getting some masks and some other protective equipment. With the help of Mark Cook and Mike Ahern and some of our local vendors, we've been able to get the supplies we need. So we are up once again with all our supplies. I'd also like a special mention to the manager at Home Depot, Bill McKenna. He's been donating a plethora of different supplies for us, whatever he can get for us. He's been donating that at no cost to the town. I just want to echo also what Amy has said about the social distancing. It's extremely important, and we've had an uptick in calls since Sunday, so we're hitting that slope on the curve now. We're doing several calls a day that are related to COVID-19. We maintain communications with the hospital, and they let us know if these patients are getting tested or not. And it has been steadily rising since Sunday. The police have also seen an increase of calls of domestic violence and other behavioral health-type calls. So the social distancing is important. The information, we've been updating as much as possible through Amy on the town website and Facebook. And if anybody has any questions, they can feel free to either call myself or Amy.
Excellent. Just a couple of other items I think are important to point out, and either one of you, I'd like you to address this. There's been some talk that started about a week ago, and this is before the press started talking about this last night and into today, as it related to, we're going to get through this hump now. We're hoping that it's in the next three to four weeks. However, they talked about a fall comeback. And Amy, I know this is something that you brought up to the COVID-19 Task Force. If you just want to be able to explain a little bit about your discussion and what you've been reading about that, and you were actually ahead of this almost a week, so if you want to just be able to talk about this a little bit.
Yeah, so pandemics come in waves, at least two, usually three, different waves of disease. And what happens is, we put all these practices in place to reduce the spread, where we're staying home and we're paying attention and we're socially isolating. So we will be able to reduce the spread now. When we start relaxing those social distance guidelines and we start allowing people to kind of get back out to some type of a normal, the disease will start spreading again, and that's where we'll get the second wave. And when the second wave comes, I think we're all anticipating the fall because the kids will be back in school, then when that starts, we'll have to really kind of consider what the next steps are to stop the spread again.
But I think that's an important part, because a lot of people are only focusing right now on the here and now. But I just think it's important for those people who are not aware, that we do want to make them aware, we are concerned about a second turn of this, and they're saying sometime in the fall of this year. That I think is important. Also, the fact that if I could ask both of you to opine on your interactions and the discussions that you've been having with your independent associations and what you've been talking about with them and what we're doing here in Mansfield, I think is an important piece of this as well. Let's start off with Chief Justin?
Sure. So we have conversations between the different chiefs' associations. We seem to be ahead of the curve from a lot of towns. Some towns are a little behind the curve in communication. I think the department head meetings we have and the task force meetings we have here in town are tremendous. The amount of communication and the way the department heads all work together, such as Mark Cook and Mike Ahern helping me with supplies, that doesn't happen in every town. So I think we're really lucky here in Mansfield that we have this amount of cooperation between all the department heads.
And very much the same, just an email chain with different health agents nearby, but also the DPH is sending out, we get a couple conference calls a week from the DPH, but just like what the chief said, there is so much communication and understanding in this community, it makes it so much easier because if there is a conflict, maybe with a question from a resident or business and you're unsure, they might question what you're saying, but we've already had a discussion within Town Hall, and I know that if somebody questioned what I had to say and they reached out to the town manager or the fire chief, I know that I'm already supported because we've had these conversations. And they are conversations, none of them are, this is what we're going to do. It's all everybody's input, and it's really a great supportive place to be right now.
Thank you, both of you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to open it up for the board at this point.
Okay. Let me just make a quick comment. I'm just going to ask the guys if it's, if it's new material, fine, otherwise, let's try and keep this meeting moving. I'd like to get the staff out as soon as possible. So with that said, if anybody has their comments, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Not really a question, this is Mike Turbridge. But I do want to give a thanks, and I think to not give them a thanks before they leave tonight would not be to anybody very well. We thank the town manager, the assistant town manager, Chief DeRosa, Chief Sellon, the Board of Health, and especially the schools stepping forward, and the nurses actually working with the Board of Health and Chief DeRosa. I think that's unprecedented, and to see, we always talk about one town, one budget, etc. I think that's where you see how it really works. And like Chief DeRosa said about the DPW helping out and working together, we're all in this together. And I think the way that they're carrying themselves and informing the citizens kind of gives a calmness to the citizens, knowing that when we have information, it is being forthright and being put on the websites. And I know every selectman pretty much posts as much information as they can. So thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
A few questions. I'll go through them quickly. Chief, thank you. You and Chief Sellon are always ahead of the curve. I mean, that's whether it's now, whether it's last year, I'm sure you'll be ahead of the curve next year, so thank you very much. Of the 18, can you tell us if any of them are hospitalized? I got that question from someone on the street, six foot away from me.
I think as of today, there's one that is hospitalized.
Okay. And can you tell the public generally how you get this information, not the hospitalization, but in general, the information, just so they're aware that we're not going around figuring out these numbers ourselves, these are reported from somewhere else?
So the way it works is, there's a database that the state runs called Maven, and it's an infectious disease database. And this exists all the time, not just for this purpose. And what happens is, the Board of Health is responsible for following up on all infectious disease within the confines of the town of Mansfield. We do that through our agreement with the Board of Health. And anytime somebody tests positive for COVID-19, the lab sends it electronically through the Maven database, and it pops up on our alerts on our desktop. And then we follow up with that person, and we have a plethora of different questions we ask, including who they may have come in contact with while they were symptomatic, and then we contact those people.
Can I just jump in for a second?
Sure.
Can I jump in for a second? Yes, so I was watching the governor, and I guess there's a new protocol now where they are releasing addresses to the Police Department too for the similar reasons, chief, so they know if they have to respond to a call that there might be someone in that property that may have the virus, so it's just for their protection also.
Correct. So we release the addresses of the positive people, no names or identifying information, just addresses, and it goes to the dispatch center and it goes directly in the computer. And the only time it's released is if our police or fire are dispatched to that location. So the privacy is maintained, nobody can go look through this list. It's only if you're dispatched to that location.
Right.
And it doesn't even come on the radio, it's electronically through the computers and the apparatus, so the guys know to use those precautions at that address.
Yep. Great, thanks. And Chief, do you have everything you need, like all the supplies you need to maintain a safe department and residence, of course?
Yes, we currently, as of today, after a few purchases, we have everything we need. We're not low on any supplies at this time.
Great, thanks. And Kevin, I really appreciate the stress that over the next two weeks, it's a critical time. It's the top of the curve more than likely, and we have to remain vigilant and stay in our homes. You mentioned some of the questions that are being asked of the town that appear to be kind of disinforming. Can you be a little more specific? And then is there any way that we could use those questions kind of in a summary to say, hey, this is what we're hearing, perhaps there's others of you that have similar questions, here's the answers?
Yes, thank you. What we're actually working on, it's a comprehensive list of all the, what we'll call frequently asked questions. And those that really come to the top of the list that are most frequently asked, those will be, of course, at the top of that list. But it has a whole plethora of different types of issues ranging from all of our municipal departments. So all of the staff have been asked, all the staff did get back to one of my staff members in our office, and that's being currently pulled together and culled. It will be put together in an official format, and then at some point over the next several days, we'll have that posted on a frequently asked question about town services in general. And Nancy Griffin is working on that from my office.
And so far, there's at least 30 frequently asked questions that we're working on.
Great. It does seem like we need to get those out as soon as we possibly can, because, as you said, Kevin, the next couple of weeks is going to be critical. I should have asked this question years ago, but it came to my mind as, how do we notify residents that there's something new on the website to read, or notify on the Facebook account that, yes, there's something new? And I came across this by trying to figure out what we put on our Facebook site, because I don't see anything in my, what do you call it, home screen, whatever it is. And I went through the process of getting the notifications through email on our Facebook site. It seems tough to try and get a direct, hey, we have an update on our Facebook site, come look at it type of thing. And especially if you put these questions out, that'll be very, very important. I don't know if there's a question there, I'm just trying to figure out what's the best way to push stuff rather than pull, essentially. A couple of last questions. Barry, you mentioned that someone needs to be present to do a meeting, and my question's why? As we add go-to meeting with recording capabilities, why do we need someone to leave their home other than town management who's there otherwise? So can we always, we can always post a replay from Mansfield Cable's website of the future go-to meeting, and we can kind of take Mansfield Cable out of the equation in the intermittent time, just so we can keep that person safe and keep you guys safe who are in Town Hall?
So in order to have, what I said, I didn't say someone had to be present who's participating in the meeting. What I said is that to have a legally posted meeting, you need somebody to leave their house and physically post the notice of the meeting in the vestibule of Town Hall. And secondly, at least now, you need someone like Jack from Mansfield Cable to leave his house and videotape it. I know that we're going to a go-to meeting, virtual meeting, and that, I think, is going to solve Jack having to leave his house to come here to Town Hall. But at least for now, we still need someone to post the physical notice of the meeting in the vestibule. We have an item on the agenda to talk about that tonight, but as we stand today, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that at the end of the meeting? Okay. I just want to ask why, we should consider asking why we still do some of those things, given that Town Hall is closed and given that we're going to go to meeting. Two last, very, very quick questions of the chief and Kevin. Are restaurants and bars selling sealed alcohol with takeout now, and have they been made aware of that? Is there anything we need to do or need to enforce with respect to that?
That's something that hasn't been approved, to my knowledge at this point, by the state legislature. So at this point, anything that's been gone through from our office until they receive communication otherwise, that they're not able to sell alcoholic beverages with takeout.
And my last question, this one, the last two came from a resident. What about the parks? Is Otis Street open for walking and hiking? Of course, no team sports, but is that available for people to go into it, park, and then walk or hike or do whatever?
As of today, that answer is yes. We're under discussion for some future discussions to restrict park access moving forward, but as of today, it is open for that type of purpose.
Great. I thank you all for your answers and for your information you guys provided. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time. These are some of the questions that I got from residents, and I'm glad you were able to share them. Thanks.
Okay. Does any other select board member have anything, any other questions for Justin or Amy? Going once, twice, sold. Okay. Justin and Amy, thank you very much. I appreciate everything you're doing and your teams are doing. Justin, we owe you a pitting ceremony. I feel bad you walked into your chief's job and you're dealing with this, so kudos especially to you. And once this all clears and we get better, we'll catch you in with your family and we'll do it right for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And also, Mr. Chair, just a shout out to all of our staff members, all the department managers, all of our employees, literally all of them. Now that we're all working fully remotely, I really want to thank them for their dedication and their service to the town of Mansfield and their residents, because if it wasn't for them doing what they're doing now, we wouldn't be operating at the capacity that we're running. So I just want to publicly thank them, because without them, we couldn't make this happen.
Great, excellent. Thank you. All right, so I guess we can let the chief and Amy take off, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. Good night.
Thanks, guys. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion and consideration of the town meeting date, and that was also mentioned by Mr. Breyer in his letter. So Kevin, can I let you start this conversation?
Sure, I'm going to refer this over to Mr. LaCass as we have a discussion item for number four and number five.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The issue about the town meeting date is one that begins in our town charter. We're supposed to have a town meeting on the second Tuesday in April, which in this case would be April 14th. And what typically would happen is that the moderator would go to the meeting place and declare it a lack of a quorum and move it to a meeting date and time that has been previously agreed to. In this case, it was May 5th. We all recognize that that is not going to happen. So what we are looking at is a town meeting of June 23rd. And so I spoke with the town moderator about that. He understands it. That would not be a problem from his point of view. I believe the schools have agreed that the school is open for that time as well. So, Mr. Chairman, what we would be looking for tonight is simply a vote of support from the select board to have the annual town meeting on June 23rd.
Okay. I think what we should do is, we should put a motion on, and then we can have a discussion.
Do you want the clerk to do that?
I move that we delay the town meeting until June 23rd.
Second. Okay, discussion. Anyone?
Can you tell me who made the second?
Michael. Mike did. Yes, Mr. Chair, a couple of points, if you mind.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, at this moment... Mr. Chair, if I could just, at this moment, if you could please have people who aren't speaking at the moment, place that on mute. We're getting some feedback.
Okay, guys. Please mute your phones and go ahead, Steve.
Thanks. Um, Barry, Kevin, I, I fully agree and I agree with Mr. Breyer's comments as well. I think there are a couple of main reasons why. Um, one of the really major reasons is, has to do with age. It doesn't take a actuary to figure out how many percent, what percent of the population that attends town meeting is over age sixty. It's gotta be at least a third. And, you know, to be able to make sure that they would be able to participate without putting themselves at risk, even on June 23rd, it might be one of those cases where they put themselves at risk. So it, with a third of the population being, I'd say, you know, the at-risk age, including some on the board, um, I, I would ask that if we start thinking about the what-if on June, even June 23rd. What if we, um, have to have some type of remote participation for those who are at risk? Cause it's not likely that this virus is gonna go away. So I'm always, in fact, all of us, I believe, are advocates for a large attendance at town meeting. And we might have to consider, based on what we learned over the next month or two with virtual meetings, how we might be able to allow others to attend virtually as well. Um, I think that's very important. The second point, well, the second point I had related to technology, um, you know, we're gonna start learning, uh, various, um, the go-to meeting package. We're gonna start seeing it effectively be used. And as, you know, a bunch of hearings have to be done prior to town meeting based on the town warrant, it's gonna be very interesting to see how well this technology works and how residents and board members could actually utilize it. So, um, you know, that's, I'm, I'm in complete agreement, um, but also have some concerns even on June 23rd for our at-risk population that tend to attend. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Churbridge? Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike Churbridge. Um, I, I think we all have concerns about all populations, um, especially the, um, the susceptible ones. But right now, Steve, we have a date of, of June 30th and that's what we're given. So we can only extend it really to the end of June. Until the governor gives us some more guidance, which I have a feeling that probably will come down the pike in the next two or three weeks where they extend it maybe even further. I don't think, um, doing remote town meeting to allow votes being taken place is allowed right now. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin?
That's correct.
That is correct.
And, and just so I can add, there is pending legislation, I think it's in conference committee now, that would, uh, give the towns, uh, a little more flexibility on how town meetings, uh, could be run, including the lowering of the requirement of a quorum, uh, in our charter. But I do not recall seeing anything in that proposed legislation about remote participation at town meeting.
So I guess my suggestion is we, we deal with what we have here now. And, and we, if things change between now and town, you know, as we get closer to the meeting, and if rules get changed, we, we worry about them then, but we can sit here all night talking about what, what, Steve?
No, Mike, I did not say let's delay it till June 30th or beyond. I said, let's consider or start planning for the possibility that our at-risk population might not be able to participate. And if we have to, get Senator Feeney, who has written some great letters of recommendation, uh, to the legislature as of late, um, uh, for such, such opportunities. Cause I think the, the administration's been very, very spot on with giving us the ability to, uh, adapt and adjust into alternative things. I agree with June 23rd, but there's likely going to be the what-if and we should start thinking about what to do about the what-if. That's all I'm saying.
Yep. And just, just for the record, I've probably been texting Senator Feeney every day, every other day about this topic and the next topic. So he knows how we feel. So it's basically, I'm, I'm telling him what you guys are saying right now. So, um-
He, he's done a fabulous job, as well as the administration. I agree, Jeff. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Neil.
Uh, go ahead. If you wanna finish up with Mike, go ahead.
No, I, I wanna make sure Mike's done.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm all done.
Okay, go ahead, Neil.
Uh, just a couple of comments. Um, I agree, I have no problem with June 23rd. Um, uh, I do think, you know, we might wanna just start thinking about if things are mo, even mostly better by then, um, whether there's any steps we can take to make it for those who do come safer. Where, you know, you spread out the seating or maybe it can be held, you know, outside under a tent or something like that. Uh, so maybe just start thinking about those things. And then just, uh, related thought is since, as people have said here, that some of the older, older people may not wanna come, is there any, is there a rule that says we have to have it on Tuesday night? I mean, could we have it on a Saturday? Uh, just, just trying to think of other ways that would make it more convenient for people to actually attend.
I think, I think everything you're saying with, with, is on the table. But I think just for tonight, we're just trying to memorialize a future date that might change again. So there was specifics of that, we could discuss subsequent to this, but I think we agree with everybody, what everybody's saying.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just pointed out, uh, to Neil's comment that, uh, moving the meeting to a Saturday uh, would not do anything to, uh, you know, deal with the public health considerations. It might actually in, increase, uh, attendance, which we wanna do eventually, but maybe this year is not the best time, uh, to go for a record. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think we've heard from all the, uh, members. So with that being said, I'm gonna ask for a vote. It's gonna have to be roll call. So I will start with, let's see, I'll start with Mike.
Aye.
Frank?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Motion carries five zero. So I think we've dealt with that and Mr. Breyer's comment. So let's start with, now, let's go to number five. Discussion and consideration to postpone the May municipal elections.
Excellent. Um, this is in regards-
I believe the governor, in the governor's, um, um, rulings that he signed into law that he has given the local authorities the power to, uh, postpone their local elections to, uh, no later than June 30th at this point. June 30th happens to be a Tuesday. So that's what is on the governor's, um, suggestions. So I'll open it up to the board if they have any comments.
Mr. Chair, I move that we move the town election till June 30th, to be con-
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, it's, uh, uh, the date makes sense cause it's consistent with our policy of having it the week after town meeting. Um, actually, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong and I, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But I believe we could actually do town meeting in July or August. We just can't do the town election past June 30th. But that's not for here or there. We just moved it already. Um, so yeah, I think that's just consistent with the way we've done things forever.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, Dylan?
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Uh, this might be a question for Kevin, but, uh, I'm just curious. I know that the, uh, governors, that, that the legislation that was passed, um, allows for mail-in ballots, uh, which I would, would guess would be at a, at a volume that, uh, the town clerk's office just isn't, uh, used to. Uh, and they don't have a large staff. Uh, the election workers tend to be in that demographic that's, that's, uh, hi, at, at high risk. And I'm just wondering how all this is wor, working out. The town clerk will still have to send out absentee ballot applications. She probably got a ton of them from, from college kids who are now home, but they have to be sent out anyway. The, uh, the, uh, the, the mail-in ballot request has to be processed and the ballot has to be sent out, et cetera. How, how do we stand, uh, with that? Do you have any idea?
So all the functions of the town clerk's office, including births, deaths, the matter of elections and ballots, all of that, they're still gonna be working remotely from home. So anything that they have to do and gather the necessary data, that's still gonna be done. And unfortunately, there will be some actions that will take place out of the home, um, at some point. Um, but they're still gonna be able to go through and handle that, the responsibilities.
Okay. And, and then guidelines on, um, how people can access mail ballots, absentee ballots, et cetera, will be listed somewhere?
Yes.
Frank, may I ask a question related?
Um, i, if it is related.
Or, it is definitely, obviously related. Um, Kevin, so how would that change the schedule? I mean, do we still certify the, the election ballot on the same date? But the, when does the, um, you know, mail-in ballot or whatever you call it, uh, the absentee ballot process start if we move the election to June 30th?
Yeah, so that's something that we're gonna have to be able to get the very clear guidance from the town clerk on and then put that up and post that and make that readily available certainly to the select board and to all the members of the general public.
Okay, but what's the dates right now that would be, um, in play if it was, you know, maintained on May 12th?
I'm sorry, Steve. I don't have that information with me tonight.
Okay. But it's sometime in, in April, right? It's like a couple of weeks from now and then, okay. So, yeah, let us know what happens with, um-
It'll be available. Yep.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know if I had to amend my motion to consider those things. That was why I asked the question.
No, I think it was all based, based on the dates. Yep. Okay, anyone else? All for a vote. All those in favor of the motion. Start with, uh, this time I'll start with Neil.
Aye.
Uh, Steve?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Yes, aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Number six, budget update. Kevin?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. LaCass has prepared, uh, some words for tonight for number six. Barry?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, I'd just say very quick update on the budget. Um, for obvious reasons, I think it goes without saying that our local receipts in, in a few of the categories are lagging behind. Uh, projections, right now, we're seventy-five percent through the fiscal year. Um, and, uh, obviously hotel meals taxes are lagging behind. Uh, building permits are sixty percent, uh, collected, uh, versus budget. And fines are about sixty-two percent collected per budget. So that's not surprising, of course. Um, insofar as FY20 expenses are concerned, uh, during one of our, um, department head meetings, the town manager made it very clear to the department heads that they were to reduce or eliminate any discretionary, non-essential, uh, purchases from, uh, this point going forward. Um, on top of that, uh, we have, uh, handed, we have sent to all department heads, uh, notification from the DLS that, um, the, uh, department head should be tracking all their COVID-19 related expenses. Um, they're doing that. Uh, so hopefully at some point, we will have a master list that I will create uh, to send to FEMA for hopefully some reimbursement. We have, um, obviously we, we're balanced for FY21, but things, uh, will probably change on that. So we're just, uh, at this point, uh, we're not sure yet what changes will be necessary. But, um, obviously we're keeping a close eye on what happens in '20 so that we can adjust for '21. Uh, the reserve fund still currently has $345,000 in it. Stabilization fund has $4.26 million.
And does that conclude your comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, that concludes my comments.
Okay. Kevin, anything on that?
Just the fact that, you know, as Barry said, fiscal '20, we know that there's gonna be a direct impact. Uh, we're not immune to what's happening across the Commonwealth, across the country and the world to that matter. Um, so we know that they will be close to hitting some numbers for fiscal '20, but certainly the fact that we're not gonna be able to go through and definitely make the revenue target. Um, and that, that's factual. Why, um, in fact, that we put into place the, the, the spending discretionary freeze? If it's not needed, any dollar amount, that, the departments have a very clear message and they understand that. Uh, there's no need to put a purchase order amount limit into effect or anything like that. The department heads are perfectly capable and understand, um, while Barry and, and I have the utmost responsibility of tracking the budgetary expenditures with them and accounting, um, that this is a very serious matter. They got that message loud and clear and they're there to be partners with us through this process. Um, but we are looking at all different types of things, um, not just on the revenue side, but certainly on the expense side. And let's be realistic about fiscal '21, right? Um, you know, the, the government, particularly the Commonwealth of Massachusetts at this point in time, um, has lost, uh, I think it's the $3 billion so far in just about three weeks' time worth of revenue, uh, which is a significant impact. And of course, that trickles down to everything that's happening here as well. Um, also being mindful the fact that we're not processing anything new at this point in time. Uh, those things that are of an emergent nature or anything that is considered, uh, that's in process, we wanna try to still continue to push those projects along. And we're working with the health agent on that and necessary permitting authorities to make sure that we can at least take care of those things, uh, whether it's failed septic systems, for example, or, uh, large building projects that are ongoing at the moment. Uh, we're trying to make sure that those in a very safe way can continue with very minimal exposure. Um, that we're mindful that that's gonna have an impact on fiscal '21. Um, so the problem is to what extent, right? And that's something that we don't know at this time. Um, but to Mr. LaCass's point, that's something that we're gonna, we're taking this on a week-by-week basis. Um, just as things continue to ebb and flow, that's also happening with the economy. Um, and the fact that we've also may be facing something additional of an impact in the fall. So certainly, it's gonna be an ebb and flow at this point, as Mr. LaCass stated. We are balanced, which is, which is great. However, we know that there's gonna have to be adjustments. Um, and as those adjustments need to be made, there'll be ongoing discussions, uh, with all of you and certainly with FinCom as we continue to move through this process. Um, but this is gonna be something that certainly ebbs and flows, um, as we continue to work through this pandemic.
Okay. Um, there's a lot of stuff on the budget, the current year and next year's budget that we're gonna have to deal with. But I think for tonight, let's keep it, you know, hopefully the questions are, are brief. Um, and we keep it at a high level. So with that being said, do any of my colleagues have anything?
Yes, um, Mike Churbridge. Uh, my questions, my questions for Kevin and Barry. Um, at what point, um, do you see that you be, start engaging with the, uh, FinCom? About the potential losses that you were just talking about. Um, obviously, we, we do, we know these are gonna be coming. Um, but I know we're, we might be a little bit early. I mean, are you looking at maybe two to three weeks? Are you looking at next week to start engaging the, uh, FinCom?
So I'm gonna let Barry, uh, Mike, speak to that specifically as it relates to the items that have been communicated. Because there have been discussions as it related to, to what we'll call what our known exposure is at that point in time. And those are things that we absolutely know, Mike, that we have incurred in expense, that we will have a future liability for. Um, so as we continue to gather those numbers and things that we are purchasing in excess of what the end appropriation will be, those are being tracked. Um, and I'll let Barry explain that in just a moment, but that's, that's one portion. That's already ongoing. Um, one of the things that I think is also important is the fact that those things that we could have in anticipation, and that's the thing that's really gonna be variable. Um, so what the-
Understood, sir.
What the discussion has been thus far would be the fact that we wanna place anything as a regular update when we find out that there are going to be new liabilities and expenses. That's something that Barry's gonna be passing along to the chairperson of the finance committee as we're going through that process. Um, however, one of the things that we're not gonna know is we really need to see the extent of what we're dealing with here. And to Amy's point earlier this evening, is this really gonna flatten the curve? I mean, everything scientifically says that if everybody does what they're supposed to, the curve should flatten. And there may be evidence that's starting to be exposed, as noted by the Boston Globe to this, this evening online, that we may be starting to experience some of that. But we really don't know, Mike, how long that's gonna go for, which of course is gonna then trigger the recovery time, which then gets into the fact of whether we see receipts coming back or not. Um, so I don't have a specific answer to that, other than the fact we need to track this as we're incurring it and making sure there's open lines of communication on that. But I do believe that at this point, it's premature to be having those discussions specifically that we're gonna have to pay really close attention to the Division of Local Services and the Department of Revenue and the Secretary of Administration and Finance for the Commonwealth. And it's way too soon to determine the final impacts of the state because if we look at it, it's about $21 million that's coming from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to the town of Mansfield. And that comes in the form of unrestricted local aid, that comes in the form of Chapter 70 and other types of other reimbursements such as veterans benefits and the such that add to the total of an approximate $100 million budget for the town of Mansfield. How much of that will be impacted, Mike? A, I, I can't tell you that right now. And I, I wouldn't be able to tell FinCom that right now. Furthermore, the impact on meals tax, uh, hotel and, uh, the, the lodging tax. Uh, what's gonna- Furthermore, the impact on meals tax, hotel and the lodging tax, what's going to happen on the building, the building fees and building inspection fees for new projects? It's very difficult at this point in time to even gauge what's going to end up happening for recovery, and how quickly then does recovery happen. So to put those estimates forth for fiscal '21, to amend them at this point, I honestly, I don't think that within a couple of weeks, we're going to have that information, Mike.
Thanks, Kevin, I appreciate that. I just, you know, we have a FinCom that's, you know, very eager to help us, and so, you know, they're going to have to take your lead on that. So as soon as you do, you and Barry feel like you do have some idea with guidance state, you know, the better, you know, better information you can get to them, and the earlier they can, the better. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I have a quick comment. Hey, Barry, thank you very much for already thinking about this. You know, it's, it's clear that we don't have a balanced budget for 2021, nobody does at this point in time, and we're probably likely to have to be more conservative in our budget. But, you know, we have a couple of months now, now that town meeting's been pushed back to think about it. I'm sure we're going to think about it consciously, and I'm glad you're already thinking about it as we speak. It's just, I keep saying how grateful I am that we actually have stabilization reserves now, which we didn't have eight years ago, seven years ago. It's just, this is why we built the reserves for days like today. Thanks, Barry, thanks, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yeah, may it be acknowledged, it's Frank.
It's Frank, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a quick, I guess, question, comment. Kevin and Barry, the information that's being prepared for the finance committee in terms of expenditures, I think the board should see that, too. I think in general, anything that goes to the finance committee or other committees that's, you know, within our purview should be shared with us. If it's, you know, if it's something specific that really doesn't rise to the level of what we should see, and you use your professional judgment, of course, but when those reports come out, I'd like to see them also. Okay? Thanks.
All right.
Absolutely.
All right, we all set?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. You want to continue on with the next item?
Yes, please.
We have, we review and approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, Steve Shonfeld.
Okay, call for a vote. Roll call again, start with, start with Frank. Frank?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jess, yes, motion carries five zero. Okay, we have payroll warrants?
Okay, yes, I'll read through them. Motion to approve town payroll, town Medicaid payroll 20039 PT in the amount of $353,974.41.
Mike Chorbridge, second. Okay, call for a vote, Steve?
Aye.
Neil?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jess abstained, 401.
Okay, a motion to approve town deductions, vendor payroll 20039 TV in the amount of
Second, Mike Chorbridge. Okay, call for roll call, start with Neil.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes, yes, five zero, motion carries.
Okay, motion to approve town payroll, town Medicaid payroll 20040 PT in the amount of $354,375.52.
Second, Mike Chorbridge. We have a motion, a second, call for a vote. Mike?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jess abstained, 401.
Okay, motion to approve town deductions, vendor payroll 20040 TV in the amount of
Second by Mike Chorbridge. Okay, call for a vote, Steve?
Abstained.
Neil?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes, yes, 401, Steve, abstention.
Okay, motion to approve school payroll, school Medicaid payroll 20040 PS in the amount
Second by Mike Chorbridge. Okay, call for a vote, Neil?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Abstained.
Frank?
Abstained.
Yes, yes, motion carries 302 abstentions, Mike and Frank. We have one more I think warrant.
Last motion is to approve school deductions, vendor payroll 20040 SV in the amount of
Second, Mike Chorbridge. Okay, call for a vote, Mike?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Yes, yes, motion carries five zero, thank you. Looks like there's a bunch of correspondence, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, a lot of-
Got to go through it pretty quickly.
Cable-related things, which is all good news for everybody. So, we got notification from Xfinity effective May 5th, the Cartoon Network will only be available as part of the digital preferred tier. April 21st, WGN America will be added to expand the instant TV entertainment. On March 24th, WE TV will be added to the same, and on February 11th, the last, the name of Choice TV became Choice Limited TV, okay. We also have a letter from the Massachusetts Lottery Commission stating that Uplow Wild Winds has applied for a Kino license, and if anyone has objection, they should send those to the Lottery Commission. We have an annual notice from Verizon and Comcast, contains the policies and procedures, sample subscriber bill, work order, and rates and channel lineup information. We have a notification from Xfinity postponing the move of the Cartoon Network that was scheduled for May 5th, probably had a big outcry because a lot of people are home. Letter from the PEC Associations about the 2020 Amtrak Vegetation yearly operational plan, and then finally, a letter from the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources about the five-year vegetation management plan and yearly operation plan of the railroad rights of way. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Neil. Okay, Kevin, TM, we have to, we have to, we were going to address Mr. Brey's third issue with the master plan. Can we chat about that briefly now?
So, so for the issue as it relates to the master plans, town meeting is definitely postponed to at least June 23rd at this point in time, and at some point, while we are not going to be meeting in a public building, in a public room, whether it's the community room at 500A East Street, or whether that's here in Room 3AB, we are going to be, until further notice, we're going into virtual land fully, starting tomorrow. So one of the things that we're going to be doing is, at some point, there will, there will be an opportunity to join in the virtual process, to be able to continue forward on that process with the town's master plan. I don't have dates or things available to that specific point in time right now, but it is important to know that that process will continue at some date to be coming up in the future. But, and I do, and I do think it's important that, you know, while Amy, our health agent, did allude this evening to the fact that there are things of a pandemic nature, while Section 6B subsection III that was quoted by him about further develop a more comprehensive plan for emergencies and address specific needs before a crisis strikes, you can always be able to go through and look at what ends up happening for emergent conditions, certainly for an issue that this was certainly not seen coming, and it did come, and it did come fast, and the resiliency plans that the town had worked on as it relates to the MIS department and allowing us to be able to work remotely from home, VPing in directly into the network, voicemails being forwarded directly to the computer, to the laptop at home, you know, certainly did work fantastic as it relates to those types of things. This wasn't a condition as it relates to an inoculation, to inoculate the entire community within a certain period of time of, say, 36, 48, or 72 hours. You know, there are plans in place to do things like that, and that's important for the, the community to know for preparing for emergencies, and considering the amount of camaraderie that you've seen thus far by all the town departments coming together in response to a worldwide pandemic, has really been something that's, that's incredible. Where I do think that we need room for improvement is certainly the, the go-to live virtual meetings, that's something that we weren't fully ready for, that we're certainly coming up to speed now, and that we do need to do some work on that, but now that we're crossing that bridge, that's something that's going to be into play. If this is long-term, folks, this is something that we are going to have to get ready for, almost to the same point as the resiliency for global warming, and that's something that we're certainly going to be working on, on an ongoing basis moving forward.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Do you want to roll into your TM report?
As it relates to that, I've been keeping you all up to date of changes, changes in numbers, as you've seen from the emails that have been sent to you. We're taking the situation very seriously. One of the things that I think has been, on top of the accolades given to all of our staff, to what you heard directly from Chief DeRozers and from our health agent, Amy Donovan Palmer, tonight, it, what we're all experiencing is working in a different environment, and it is taking 100% plus of everybody's time trying to work in this new world, in this new environment. So if things aren't being processed as quickly as they normally would, we're asking not only for your patience, but we're asking for the public's patience as we go through and to work at this. And I think that some people are certainly surprised when they call, and people are answering the phone and thinking that we're here in the building, and in many circumstances, you know, Barry and I are going full virtual with all of our staff tomorrow at home, we're not here in the building anymore after tonight, and that's going to be something that changes. That's not to say we won't stop in from time to time as absolutely necessarily required, but as it relates to now, we've been bringing boxes home with all of our necessary pertinent documents, as if we don't come back the next day, and all of our staff has been working under those parameters. So I ask for your patience as we continue to work through this, and that we're continuing to, to learn in this new virtual world. It isn't the same, and, and part of the difficulties that you'll find with that is that we can't as efficiently do things as if we had all of our staff with us here, which causes everything to slow down. So not only has that been repeated by the police, by the fire department, but also certainly with our health agent, it's very difficult when you suddenly run solo, and you don't have your office staff, and so whether you're the treasurer collector, the assessor, or the town clerk, or someone in the DPW administration, or even my office, when you have a whole team with you every day, that's one thing, but what everyone's saying is that we're certainly, we're ebbing and flowing through all of this, but we're having to take some extra time to make sure that we're crossing our Ts, dotting our Is, you know, in between conference calls, you're still getting text messages, you're still getting emails that have to be responded to, so it is taking longer for us to do things. However, everyone needs to be, again, commended for the 100% team effort to get through something like this, and that we will continue to do this going forward until the situation ceases to exist, and we come back to some alternate state of reality, and I think that we're going to come back with that certainly, and we will be resilient, but that's going to certainly take some time for us. As we continue to ebb and flow through that process, we'll continue to update the board as we continue to be able to make our way through this new uncharted territory, but I'm very, very pleased to where we are now, and as we continue to be able to operate in this new world. But I also cannot express more tonight, that we need the public to please pay certain attention to the fact of what we're going through. This is really truly uncharted territory, and when you hear those mandates coming forth, and you hear the please coming from your government officials, so whether that's the Mansfield Select Board, whether that's coming directly from my office here at Town Hall, under my letterhead and my voice, my face on video, whether that's coming from our chiefs, our public health agent, it's coming from our schools, we need everyone to please make certain that you're heeding the advice that's coming from your government, and we're taking that 100% plus very seriously, and to be able to tell the public, the most that you can help with this is to bring down this curve. We need you to stay home, we need you to stay in as much as you can, limit your distance with people, and to heed those cautions and advices, we don't want to see large groups of people together. And the more that people take this seriously, everybody is in this together. And for the first time, when we really talk about all together, we're all in the same town, we're all in the same state, we're all in the same country, and to see these number of cases exploding, it's coming to people who are near and dear to you. And it doesn't matter the age anymore, we're seeing cases of infants, we're seeing cases of young people, teenagers, it is not just the elderly. That is a misconception that's out there. It was at the beginning said that it was older people, it's not just older people. Immune systems are being compromised with respiratory issues, and people are passing away. We need to take this 100% extremely seriously, that's where we're dedicating almost 100% of our time at this point in time and working through this crisis, and I ask everyone for their full participation and 100% seriousness due to this crisis. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We have select board members, questions and comments, who would like to start first? We can just wrap, bring this home pretty quickly. Anyone? That's, going once, going twice.
One quick question, one quick comment, Neil here. Earlier, it was mentioned, and I can send this to you, Kevin, if you'd like, or to Nancy, as far as disseminating information from the town through Facebook, you know, if people follow the Mans, the town of Mansfield Facebook page, there is a way to get that information to show up in your news feed, at the top of your feed. If you click on following, there's a button, there's a choice to click on see first, and that way, whenever the town publishes something, it'll show up at the top of your news feed. So I could send that in writing to you, if you'd like, just to get people, again, we're trying to get information out there and keep people as updated as possible, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Neil.
All right. Okay, Kevin, I just want to, on behalf of all of us, I know that, I want to thank every, you know, you had, was mentioned earlier, all the employees, everybody, and under your leadership, I know who's been trying, everyone's lives are being disrupted, but we're all, just like you said, we're in this together, and we want to make sure that you and everyone in that room tonight stay safe also. So under your leadership, I want to thank you for everything you guys are doing, and, you know, hang in there, it'll be over, we just have to, you know, we just have to get through it. So anything that we can do, you know, we're all working from home, so we're here, so please reach out, and again, I want everybody to stay safe, and again, I want to thank you, Barry, everyone in that room, Carrie, everyone there, Tracy, Nancy, everyone that's helping, all your staff, all the department heads, everyone. And really, I want to emphasize the fact that people need, if you don't need to be outside, please stay home. You know, I drove around, I saw groups of people walking, and it wasn't three or four, it was five, seven, 10 people, and I know everyone's getting a little edgy at the house, but please, the longer we, the longer people continue to not social distance, the longer this is going to go on. So please, I'm asking that we all have to suck it up a little bit, but we'll get through it together. All right?
And, and, and just one, two more things, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
One of the things that we're going to, I'm going to ask, Nancy Griffin had just sent me a message, just to note, there is an option to sign up for notify me on the town's website, and we're going to do a push on that.
Town's website, and we're going to do a push on that. Chris George, who works part-time in my office and part-time in the Health Department, has a tutorial of how to sign up, and we will get that out. Because anything that we post, you have the opportunity to get a text or an email for that type of information. So, I will have Chris do the push to get that information out. The more people that can sign up for notify me, anytime that the website is updated and you choose per the different topics, you will get a text message to your phone, you click on it, and it takes you to that section of the website. So, I'm going to thank you, Nancy, for that, and I'll make sure that Chris gets that out.
Okay. We do have an item that's not anticipated by the Chair 48 hours prior to this meeting. And I believe Barry touched on it a little earlier regarding having meetings and postings of meetings and so forth. So, I don't know if Kevin or Barry, you want to just run with this for a little bit, and then we'll decide on what we want to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's absolutely true, and I'm glad this is on the agenda. And I thank the Town Clerk, Marion Staples, for suggesting that, suggesting this at this particular time. I think it's a wonderful idea. And it basically circles back to the concern I raised earlier, which is a human being having to leave their home, in this case, to post a meeting. What this proposal does, what this motion does, it officially changes the location of where the Town posts its meetings, from the vestibule right here at Town Hall to the Town's website. And if we can do that, if the Select Board supports that, then I believe that we can have a true virtual meeting anytime, anywhere, without a human being having to leave their house. And that's where we want to be. We want to protect the lives of everybody that's involved with Town Hall in the residence. So, I think this will complete the full circle from a legal standpoint. So, I would ask the Select Board to please support this. Again, we're changing the official posting place from the vestibule at Town Hall, which is where it is now, to the Town's website. Thank you. That concludes...
So, move. This would, this is Frank. Move. Hang on a second. We have a motion, a second?
Second, Steve.
Okay. This handles, I know, I think Neil or Steve or both, you brought this up earlier as far as, you know, we're going to be doing the virtual stuff. And that's why I kind of waited to the end here, so we could talk about this topic, because this will kind of hopefully handle the confusion about having to post things and be a little bit more efficient with having any virtual meetings.
Mr. Chair, I agree, and that's why I brought it up earlier. I think with the Town Hall closed, no one's going to see the postings anyway. So, it just makes sense to either do this, do this temporarily. I mean, we're not doing this permanently, right? Okay, so I try to make all sense in the world and...
This is during the emergency, and then we can deal with it.
Right, so we got access to the websites. You know, this will enable the boards and committees to meet as they should and try and get at least that part back to normal. I was just noticing on Facebook that the Honorary Mayor Norton just did a summary of the Norton Industrial Development Commission meeting that just happened tonight. So, they're doing the same thing, let's do that, too.
Okay, we are. Good. Okay, any other comments? Call for a vote. I will start with Steve.
Aye. Intuitively, aye.
Neil?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Frank?
Aye, indubitably.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, the actual motion that was just passed is the motion that was, I believe, sent to the chairman. Is that correct?
To the clerk.
Can you, I didn't really hear that, Barry. Can you repeat that?
I just want to make sure the wording of the motion that was just voted on is the exact wording that was, I believe, sent to the clerk?
Barry, can you read that for us, then?
Sure.
So, I can know what it is.
Not into the microphone as much, but over to the phone.
So, the motion was to change the official designated place for the Town of Mansfield meeting postings during the state of emergency from the vestibule at Town Hall at the handicap entrance to the Town of Mansfield website, www.mansfieldmass.com. This is needed as per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A.
Isn't that what I said?
I did, I wasn't sure, but I wanted to make sure it was in the record.
And Barry, when you say Mansfield, it's mansfieldma.com, right? Not mansfieldmass?
I'm sorry, ma.com, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and thank the Town Clerk for coming up with that. That's great. Now, we still, I think we still need to have control of the meetings through the TM, because, I mean, we don't want to have 7 million meetings going on either. You know what I mean?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and we will be addressing that as it relates to a new memorandum that will be sent out in the near future.
Okay.
Right now, we're still operating off the original memorandum that went out on March 11th to all boards and committees, and that order is still in effect through April 11th.
Okay. Okay. All right. Gentlemen, you okay with that?
Yes.
Let's say, yep?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I think we have everything we need to talk to tonight. Anything else?
No, that is it, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
Just quickly, I earlier asked Barry kind of sternly, I think, to send me copies of a report that he has been sending. So, I'm a little, you can't see, I'm a little red-faced here, and I apologize, Barry. Thanks for your, for being polite and not calling me on that. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
This is, this is why we need the go-to meetings, we can see Frank's red-faced. Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Steve?
Aye, yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Frank?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jess, aye, motion carries, five zero. We are adjourned. Thanks, guys.